I'm going to call the BUHS number six meeting for May 1st, 2017 to order at 7:00. And first up on our agenda as always is the clerk's report and approval of the minutes from our April 3rd meeting. I'm assuming everybody got those minutes.
I move approval of the minutes of April 3rd.
Is there a second?
Yes.
Okay, seconded by Ralph, thank you. Are there any additions, deletions, corrections to those minutes? Seeing none. All those in favor of approval of minutes of April 3rd as presented, signal primarily saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed or abstentions? I'm standing as well. He and I are standing for the same reason, we weren't here. Okay, excellent. Alright, are there any other communications that came before board members that people want me to talk about? Seeing none. We'll move on to recognition of groups and individual visitors, which we have none. So is there a motion to enter consent agenda?
I move with consent, go into consent agenda.
Thank you. Moved. Is there a second?
Yes.
Seconded by Mike? Okay, excellent. Alright, so we'll start with finance, building, and transportation.
Finance, building, and transportation, finance met on the 6th of May, of April, excuse me, and we approved warrant numbers 1141, 1142, 1144, 1145, and 1146 for a total of $308,905.45. And we approved payrolls of March 3rd, an amount of $420,572.39. March 17th, and the amount, excuse me, of $427,778.46. And March 31st, an amount of $431,595.69 there. Let me get that up. And we also met with gentlemen from People's Bank.
Let me elaborate on that just a little bit.
You can elaborate on that if you'd like.
We, uh, People's Wealth Management manages the, what we call the non-IMES portion of our portfolio. After Pete Sherlock's retirement last year, year and a half ago perhaps, and so they presented us with their approach. And we, that portfolio is somewhere in the million dollar range, a little bit plus or minus. And it's being balanced, I mean, under a balanced investment objective, risk, risk to return. One of the points that came up was that they recommended that we review any social value implications of equity positions if there are. And that would be something that we would probably pass along to the policy committee to weigh in on. Not that we know specifically there's investments in there that we shouldn't have, but, uh, so their return, their, their performance has been solid after the first year, in the same range as the other two managers who each manage half of the IMES fund. So that was a good meeting and educational, and now we have met with all three of our investment managers this year.
Yeah, they offered to help with the local board policy that controls that, those funds, which I thought was a really nice suggestion. So they'll make some changes to the local board policy and bring it back to finance, and then we'll be able to look at it and either take their recommendation or make changes or whatever.
And we should, it should work its way through a policy committee.
Yes.
And then we met on the 17th of April as the Building and Grounds Committee.
Kind of, yeah.
And toured the groundstand. And the outcome of that was that gonna do an analysis of the costs and other ramifications for rehab, ADA compliance versus demolition, and construction of a replacement, later in storage.
Okay, is that it?
Yep.
I believe so.
Okay, great. Is that one of the things I could, this is a little bit of a non-secrator, but I thought maybe it'd be good to plug it in. We've talked a lot about the IMES scholarship, and it's actually the deadline for the scholarships today. And so I didn't really know too much about Ralph Eames, who was the individual that started the scholarship, so I looked, you know, looked it up. So Ralph Eames was born in 1915, and then he died in 2006. And he had gone to BHS, which I think Ruth has mentioned before. And then he went from there to Wellesley University and graduated in 1937. And then he became an executive with the best insurance company in New Jersey. So I guess that's, he never married, so I guess that's where he accumulated some of his money that he was able to leave to the high school. And he was really interested in art. He collected a lot of art. So pretty interesting individual. And he was the safety director for the head of safety publications for the best insurance company until he retired in 1975.
Thank you for that, Sean. Alright, WSCSU Finance Committee.
We have not met. I think the 24th at 5:00 PM is our next meeting.
Okay. Planning a policy?
Has not met, but it sounds like we will have stuff to talk about soon. Well, does policy changes, do we expect, proposed policy changes, do we expect will be ready by the, our next meeting? Or are we looking at longer term than that?
Well, I'm not sure what their, what their time pay would be. I think that, I'm not sure which order this, this ought to go in. But we can probably at Finance ask Frank to provide us with a copy and just make any, maybe there's nothing that needs to be, we feel needs to be changed. But I would say probably not by the, by the 2nd May meeting.
And what was the other thing that you said that we were going to have to look at?
Reviewing positions for social value or something like that?
Well, that's what I was, well, that's what I was saying.
That's the policy.
Yeah.
Oh, okay, so the change to the policy and the review of the, sort of the same.
Well, if there's anything in the, you know, should be in the policy about certain types of investments, you know, and again, we, we didn't have the policy in front of us, but that point was brought up as, you know, socially responsible investment and so forth.
And doesn't the policy also deal with whether you want to have a conservative investment philosophy or more aggressive?
But that wouldn't be, I wouldn't think so much for the policy committee.
Thought that was in the policy, it restricted social investments.
Well, it is, but yeah. But I think this came up in regards to particular investments.
Social responsibility on it?
That we wouldn't want to invest in a Putin regime or something like that.
Philip Morris, Exxon. Too high paying great dividend stocks.
Okay. Teacher Curriculum Committee, has not met. BAMS Committee.
The BAMS Committee met on April 10th, and a pretty interesting meeting. We discussed the process around the social studies hire, and I'm sure that Keith will have the N-word there. But it was really interesting seeing how the, how many individuals actually pled for the job, which was 50. And then it just went down and, and they narrowed it down to the interview process. And Mike was nice enough to sit in on that and contribute to that. And then in addition to that, Keith mentioned to us the site visit by the 21st Century Leadership Council, I guess it is, is what it's called.
21st Century Grant, yeah.
Right, 21st Century Grant, yeah. Which really helps a lot for the IMES funding. And it sounds like next year is the next grant cycle for the 21st Century Grant, so it was a good meeting.
Keith, do you, do you know if the 21st Century Grant made it through the budget that was, that's been worked out? Because there was a proposal to zero that out along with all sorts of other things, but I just haven't, I mean, I just didn't know if some associations sent out emails or any.
I had not heard anything. Doesn't mean it couldn't happen, but I haven't heard that.
I'm assuming that it made it through, but I was just wondering.
Alright, WRCC.
That's not, no.
Okay. WSCSU Act 46 Study Committee.
We've not had a meeting.
Oh, wow. We're supposed to have a meeting this week, but that was canceled.
First it was postponed, then it was canceled, presumably because there is nothing new for us to.
Right. On Monday, there's a group going with Dr. Staley to go up to meet with folks from the state. I believe it's Monday, the 8th, to go up to Berry to meet with some folks to talk about next steps and things like that, to get their ruling, because we, the Act 46 Study Committee had officially said, alright, where did it impasse, what do we do, help us. And I think they're going up to meet with them on Monday. But they have like a 45-minute window. It's like, they're going all the way to Berry, I think it's, I think it's in Berry for like 40, for a 45-minute meeting, to get, presumably to get that assistance. So we'll keep you posted as we know more. Anything else to come before consent agenda? Is there a motion to approve?
Move to approve consent agenda.
Is there a second?
Second.
Moving second in. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed or abstentions? Okay. Let's move to administrative reports. Start the far end of the table.
Can I, can't get connected, I have something I want to refer to when we start.
So we'll start at the other end of the table, so hopefully you can connect by then we get to you. Alright, WRCC.
So, a few items that I want to share. A few weeks ago, we had a Spring Skills USA competition located in Burlington. Two students competed in customer service, two students competed in automotive service technology, three students competed in criminal justice, one student competed in first aid and CPR, three students competed in crime scene investigation, and one student competed in electrical wiring, and one student observed mobile robotics. And our crime scene investigation team received a bronze, so congratulations to Lieutenant Laster and his group of kids. Thirteen students is the most we've ever had to attend the Skills USA conference since we reinstated Skills USA three years ago. So I'm pretty excited about the growth and the opportunity these kids will, can obtain with this experience. I hope it'll continue to grow. It's a great opportunity for kids. And the prizes are amazing if they place first, second, or third in their competitions. Our forestry program just completed their game of logging, industry-recognized credentialing. And nine out of the 10 students that participated in the program received Northeast woodland training certificates. Levels one and two were completed along with the, what was called the storm damage cleanup as well. Alan Sands was the instructor and gave an excellent report back to Errol Nelson, the teacher, upon completion of the program. What was covered was proper saw maintenance, filing, proper tree felling techniques, how to identify hazards in the woods, tree tension, spring falls, and other types of forestry skills. Mr. Nelson does not attend this out in Pleasant Valley. He lets the instructor of the program take over, and the kids come back and really excited, and they're here at 7:00 in the morning waiting to attend this excellent experience. And some of the feedback that Mr. Nelson gets is, wow, this guy told us everything that we already knew from you, Mr. Nelson. So it's nice that the teacher hears this from, you know, the kids and from other sources as well. And being his first-year teacher, he's doing an awesome job in the classroom. But he also had a great teacher for 14 years as well, Mr. Hamilton. I do have one retirement that I, an approval I'd like to get from the board tonight, a resignation, that's Laura Reed, math, our tech math teacher. She's been with our WRCC for over 10 years. And I just want to thank her for a lot of new initiatives and curriculum design work that she has done for us, and also for other CTE centers across the entire state of Vermont. She has been called by other centers to do trainings within math, CTE and math integration. And she by far is going to be missed by many, and some very large shoes to fill. I hope and I'll get some applicants that can do what she did. So that's all I have.
Alright, we'll take care of that now. Does anybody have a question?
I move that we accept resignation of Laura Reed with regret.
Seconded, moved to second. Alright, all those in favor?
Aye.
Alright, thank you. Alright, let's move down to the high school.
So, just some information, some spring support schedules. If you haven't got out there yet to watch the Colonels in Action, it's always a good time. And even the baseball game today, I was at, and despite the weather, people were watching, nobody was in the bleachers though. So it was good. So first off, I'm very proud and honored to announce our 2017 valedictorian is Mr. Ryan Taggart of Brattleboro. And Ryan's done an impressive job all four years here. And he's currently weighing two options for schools, and whatever school he chooses, we'll certainly be honored to have him as well. And our class salutatorian is Jacob Canizero of Brattleboro as well. And Jacob has chosen to go to George Washington University, just made that selection last week. Jacob's been an extremely hard-working student looking forward to studying computer science. And we wish both of these gentlemen well. And they certainly represent some of the best academics that BU just has to offer, so. Next week, we are welcoming all of the schools in Vermont for the Allstate Music Festival. It's been since 2003, I believe, since the last time, it was pre-granovation when we hosted. That begins on May 10th. And on Wednesday, May 10th, there will be the Allstate Parade through downtown Brattleboro. And so if you get a chance to see that, all of the bands will be participating, marching. I think they're following the normal parade route in town. And then after that, on Thursday, Friday, and Saturday, there'll be performances all the time here. And I want to thank our cafeteria staff for saying, when we asked if they could accommodate another 400 students for three days, you're like, sure! So I want to thank them. And everybody else, you know, Patty Meyer has been working really hard to find housing for people. Steve Rice has been working tirelessly to get the venues organized. And he has delegated a lot of things to other employees throughout the district at all levels. And people have really stepped up, and so it's going to be a great festival, so we're looking forward to that. We, on Saturday, welcomed back our exchange students, our, sorry, our students from the exchange. They went to Switzerland, they spent three days in Paris, and then spent a balance of their time in Switzerland. They had homestays, they visited Versailles, they had a chance to go down to some elementary schools and practice French, and students practiced their English. They actually visited Red Cross headquarters in Geneva, and International ULM headquarters, and even a chocolate museum, who knew? And Suzanne Grenoble led that trip, did a great job of organizing it and making sure everybody was there. And, you know, as you may recall, last week there were some problems in downtown France. We were in downtown Paris, and we were in close contact and made sure, you know, I got ahold of Suzanne through Karen Sebastian. You know, I was told, they're already in bed, it's okay. So they did a good job of taking care of our kids and keeping our kids very safe. I'm proud to also announce that we have got 11 applicants for the IMES scholarship.
11?
Certainly did okay.
It was eight this afternoon.
Right, it was eight this afternoon, and today's the last day, now it's 11, so that's good news to hear. And we hope that those students get a chance to take advantage of the generosity of Mr. Eames. Our last day of classes, after a whole lot of adjusting for snow days, Dr. Staley's let us know that our last day of classes will be the 19th. That is the Monday after graduation, which will be the 16th on Sunday, Natridge Field. And final exams are going to be a little bit different this year. Seniors will be taking some of their finals on the 14th, on Wednesday, the 14th, and some of their finals on Thursday, the 15th. Grades nine through 11 will be taking their finals on the 15th and 16th. And if you want the convoluted schedule, I can get that for you, it's also online. Chris Day's done a nice job of balancing days. Wanted, wanted to make sure that seniors could finish their finals to avoid any unpleasant surprises on Friday. So you gotta think that way. In terms of hiring, I want to thank Ruth. We spent today interviewing course candidates, and we'll interview one more on Wednesday. I think Ruth would agree that the candidate pool was very robust, had some great applicants. One of them actually did an impromptu performance during her, her interview, which is nice. And, you know, we're looking forward to moving that process along. We're probably going to do site visits and sample lessons the week after the Allstate Festival. Mr. Rice asked if we could not do it next week. We have had to reopen our math position. We had some applicants who declined the position, and then a few other applicants that, once we saw them teach, we elected to not pursue their application anymore. So we'll be, that's reopened and the 19th, Ruth?
The 19th.
We'll be doing a little bit more. I have one last item, which has to do with some communications I've had with, with staff and with, with students. We have a long tradition at BUHS of having a prom king and a prom queen. And what we've done every year since I was in high school and beyond is clubs of individuals have elected nominees for a prom court, and then there's been a vote, and then at the end of the night at prom or at homecoming at halftime, the king and queen are announced. This year, the junior class advisors and council wanted the process to be more inclusive. So they asked if each advisory would nominate a male and a female for king and queen. And an email was sent out to that effect. I received from, from staff member, two staff members, and a few students, some concern about the process and the sensitivity of electing a king and a queen. As you know, many of our students identify gender differently than birth, and some of our students actually prefer and change their, their preferred gender and their preferred way of being referred to through high school and through middle school. With that in mind, I met with the junior class council and the advisors last Friday, which is eight days before prom. And we made the decision that this needs some conversation. It needs some conversation, not just the principal and a few people, it needs a wider conversation with a broad base of students and teachers and community members. And so we need to have that conversation about a more permanent solution. For this prom, the junior class council, we talked about a lot of different options. Do we not do, do we go ahead with a king and a queen? Do we not do it at all? What they have come up with is that for this year, each advisory will select one student who best exemplifies leadership and the BUHS core values. And then juniors will vote on the, that court, and then the top two selections, regardless of how they identify their gender, will be referred to as prom royalty. So they've made that decision for this year. I support that decision. I've had several students and, and staff members thank the junior class council and thank me for taking that step this year. As I said, this is not a permanent solution, but we do need to be more sensitive than we have been in the past. That, you know, a king and a queen, that term does offend some people, and people aren't comfortable with it. So as I said, a longer solution, it's going to take some while to sort out, but this is our short-term solution. What I passed around was the email outlining that decision to staff and students.
I applaud you, Steve.
I didn't do it.
That was really great leadership, setting the tone. Thank you.
Alright, were you able to connect?
Yes.
Excellent.
Got what I needed.
Alright, so let's move down to BAMS.
Hi, everyone. Let's see, I want to report, give a few things from teachers who sent, sent along information. This Saturday, Steph Pike, a science teacher on Team Taurus, has taken three girls to the UVM Girls' Science Day, so she's excited about that. And it's great to have a, you know, it's a small group, but kids and a staff member willing to take a Saturday to do that. If you didn't hear it, you may have caught it on the radio, Miles Anton, he's an A-trader at BAMS, spoke at a civics panel with Chris Lennoy and Fitch on WKBT. It was a few weeks ago now, but it was really well-done and compliquaire. Social Studies teacher supported that, and I got a copy of the, the audio clip, and pretty neat. It was on air for like an hour. Officer, also in, in social studies class, Officer Mark Carrigan came and spoke with social studies about the Bill of Rights, the, in particular, the First and Fourth Amendments. So I'm happy to have him here and helping out. And from our tech teacher, she wanted to report Daisy Frederick, that students in her classes have entered the National STEM Video Game Challenge. And that's part of the STEM curriculum, the developing video games, and kids really are engaged in this stuff. And she reported that over 1,000 video games have been created in her classes, out online by, by students. So pretty neat. Few events coming up. The 18th is the BAMS Pops Concert, so that's always a great thing. And last week was the All-District Chorus Festival. And I'm not sure if anybody was able to go, but Patty Meyer is, who all know, is, is leaving at the end of the year. And there was a surprise, not a presentation, an honor, honoring by the Guilford students as they, as they did their little song. They tailored it to Patty and get overwhelmed her quite a bit, but she got a standing O, and, and it was really, it was a great kind of, kind of way to, she's not quite ready to go off, but it was, it was very touching. Let's see, Teacher Appreciation Week is next week, not this week, but the week after. So thank a teacher if you see them. I try to honor the entire staff that week as best we can. we can. The infamous S-Back testing is going on right now. Our kids have been working really hard. There's four major sections, two for English Language Arts and two for math. And it's been as smooth as it's ever been, without a doubt. Of course, it's our third year doing it, but the technology, Bob Wickberg and the Technology Department have really upgraded the Wi-Fi access over the last year or so. 300 something kids testing at once and not a single issue that I was aware of as far as connectivity. I think the high school certainly helped us by trying to limit their Wi-Fi use, but it has not been an issue and the students integrate with the testing. So we're really happy with that so far. One more day later this week and then a bunch of makeup this week. Today they did some math and Thursday would be some math testing. And then, of course, the eighth graders also get the Science Kneecap. Kneecap, New England Common Assessment Programs, kind of the old testing system, pen and pencil or pencil and paper, that's going away. I believe this is the last year, we hope that this is the last year of that format. And hopefully they'll use similar system to the S-Back test. So eighth graders get a lot of testing this year, unfortunately. Friday is Diversity Day, but we are, right now, we're planning on bringing in a guest speaker. His name's Ty Sells and he's going to be here to speak. I think his primary message is around drug and alcohol use. And I believe he'll be speaking with a freshman, but also the middle schoolers. And this is partially funded by grant by the Brattleboro Area Prevention Coalition, so we're excited to have him here. He's a pretty well-known speaker, apparently. I've never seen him, but we're happy to have him and, of course, those issues are, impact everyone in our community, so. I have two staffing updates. We'll see, I have to recommend, I would like to recommend, I'm proud to recommend, a new science teacher, Scott Davenport. BAMS Committee reported out. Scott is from, well, he's originally from Pennsylvania, but began, he taught, he bounced around a little bit, but spent a year in the bush in Alaska, which has a lot in common with Joe Powers, who also taught in Alaska. And Scott was there for a year and then spent the last five years down in North Carolina teaching in Greens, Greensville? No, not Greens.
Greensboro.
Greensville, Greensboro. Was it Greensboro? Yeah. One of the green. And, but Scott blew us all away, you know. Sean was reporting that there were 50 applicants and he, his name came up over and over with people who reviewed the resumes, but when he interviewed, his first interview was Skype. Skype and he was just outstanding, people really enjoyed him. So he flew in, taught a lesson in person, it was great. And we had really good applicants, but he was a slight edge over our other finalists. It was a good problem to have and that we had to make some tough choices, but I want to recommend Scott. He's got a great personality, kids are going to love him. Energetic, brings a variety of experiences, life experiences. He coaches football, baseball, very active in the community, so we're excited about him. Sometimes people want to move, you know, he wanted to move because he has family in the area and being in North Carolina is pretty isolated, so coming back. So I would like to ask your, ask for you to approve the appointment of Scott Davenport as a new social studies teacher on Team Canis.
Is there a motion?
I'd like to move that we approve the hiring of Scott Davenport for the BAMS, is it social studies?
Yep.
Correct. Social Studies position and great, thank you.
Thanks. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, somebody. Pick, Jane. All right, all in favor?
Aye.
All right.
I do have a resignation to ask for your approval of, Raquel Moreno. Many of you know her son, Eli Lombardi, who's an outstanding athlete, student. Raquel is our academic support teacher in math. It's a part, it was reduced to a part-time position last year. And she has an opportunity to have a full-time job at the high school in the special ed, technically for the central office, special ed, full-time teacher, so should be great. She's a great employee, we'll miss her at BAMS, but she's staying in the district. So I'd like to ask for your acceptance of her resignation.
I'll move the acceptance of the resignation with regret of Raquel Moreno, effective at the end of this school year.
Yes. Is there a second?
Second.
Second, thanks, Russ. All in favor?
Aye.
All right.
Okay, one last thing, save the best for last. I get the pleasure of introducing you to the Vermont, Vermont Principals Association Principal of the Year, Mr. Steve Parent. He's very humbled by this and he just doesn't like to talk about it, so I'll speak, I'll pass this around. It's the press release from the VPA and I assume most of you saw the headline in the Brattleboro reformer, so.
There will be payback.
Yeah. So congratulations, Steve.
Thank you.
Dr. Staley asked me to, actually you can pay back Dr. Staley because this was, I would have never said a word about it.
Thank you.
Add it to the list.
So, you know, really quickly, thank you for all of your support over the years and, you know, I do feel like I owe some gratitude to Dr. Staley for being a role model and mentor and also to Jim Day, who gave me some very pragmatic advice that I can't repeat in company. But he really, you know, I've had the luck to have a lot of people who have taken care of me along the way and have given me good advice. I'm lucky to work with a board that is supportive of kids all the time. But most of all, I'm really lucky to work with a staff that really cares about kids and really wants and best for kids. And, you know, as I said to the reformer and to the keen sentinel, it really is a validation of what goes on here every day with the staff, so I do want to acknowledge their work, so thank you. On every behalf of the committee.
Thank you.
Good work.
Could be recognized August, well, it says it, August 2nd. Does anybody have anything from Central Office?
I do. I've been asked to distribute the Vermont Code of Ethics for school board members, asked that you review it, sign it and give it back to me and then I will return it to Central Office.
This is a pretty standard thing for those of you who may or not remember that we have to do on a pretty regular basis. So I'll just start passing it around. It's under our unfinished business in our agenda, but because it's going to, you know, people take time to read what they're signing and things like that, but I'll sign it and pass it along and we can just kind of work it along as we're going through other stuff. Thank you, Steve, for bringing this. Nothing else under administrative reports that I'm aware of? Just, so moving to unfinished business, which the other thing under unfinished business was Code of Ethics, yes, or?
Mr. Chairman, in light of the fact that there has been a great deal of discussion on the state level about ethics and codes of ethics and so forth, and being that, I feel that probably the public doesn't know a thing about this Code of Ethics and it's very short, I'd like to read it.
Go for it.
So that the public will know what we're talking about.
Nice.
Sounds good.
This is titled, "The Vermont Code of Ethics for School Board Members. As a member of my local school board, I will remember that my primary concerns must be the educational welfare of the students in my district and excellent return on investment for taxpayers. I agree to conduct myself in accordance with the following commitments. I will act within the scope of my official role, recognize that a board member's responsibility is to see that schools are well-run, but not to run them. Act only as a member of the board and not assume any individual authority when the board is not in session unless otherwise directed by the board. Give no directives as an individual board member to any school administrator or employee publicly or privately. Avoid making commitments that may compromise the decision-making ability of the board or administrators. Uphold the highest ethical standards. Not receive anything of value by contract or otherwise from the school district or supervised reunion unless it is received as a result of a contract accepted after a public bid in public recognition of service or achievement, as a board stipend, reimbursement or expense allowed by law for official duties performed as a member of such board. Not solicit or receive directly or indirectly any gift or compensation in return for making a recommendation or casting a vote. Agree to recuse and remove myself from board deliberations and votes when necessary to avoid the appearance of conflict of interest. Not agree to the hiring of a superintendent, principal or teacher already under contract with another school district unless assurance is first secured from the proper authority that person can be released from his or her contract. Respect my peers, my constituents and confidentiality considerations. Voice opinions respectfully and treat with respect other board members, administrators, school staff and members of the public. Maintain confidentiality of information and discuss, and discussion conducted in executive session and uphold, uphold applicable laws with respect to the confidentiality of student and employee information. Attend all regularly scheduled board meetings insofar as possible. I agree to abide by the principles outlined in this Code of Ethics and will do everything in my power to work as a productive member of the leadership team."
Thank you for bringing that, that was a very good idea. Thank you, appreciate that. So that's what's coming around and then there's lines for all of us to sign as board members, so.
I presume the new hire has been authorized to be released from his current contract?
Yeah. Was there anything else from Central Office?
Yeah.
Okay. Is there any other unfinished business to come before us to make, that anybody's aware of? Is there any new business to come before us to make? I just, Steve mentioned about graduation and the last day of school. Is BAMS moving up ceremony still scheduled for the Wednesday prior to high school graduation?
Yes.
As is typical?
Yes.
Just thought I'd, it's a good thing to check.
Yeah.
So that's the 14th.
It is the 14th, the Wednesday evening at 6:30, 6:00 PM.
Okay. And then, do we know when the career centers?
Yes.
Award ceremonies?
June 7th.
June 7th.
At 5:00, the BAMS multipurpose room.
Great. So for those board members who have never been to any one of those award ceremonies, I encourage everybody to try to get to them because they're always a great time, good opportunity to see the kids doing, you know, and celebrating themselves and their families and it's always really nice, so. All right. Is there anything else to come before the board tonight?
Very none, Mr. Chairman. I will adjourn.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second, you can second it. All in favor?
Aye.
Close your fidgets. All right, we are adjourned. Thank you all.